And a special welcome to those attending our town meeting for the first time. My name is Russell Rowe, and I have the honor of being your town moderator. The time being, 7:25, and there being a quorum of at least 100 registered voters, I now call Oxford's special town meeting to order. I note that the town clerk, excuse me, I note from the town clerk, the receipt of the return of the posting of the warrant of the special town meeting by the constable. I'd like to mention a note on safety. In case of fire or other emergency, the evacuation routes are located in the rear of the auditorium, which is the way most of you entered, as well as both sides of the stage in the front of the auditorium. Please check to see if anyone needs your assistance, especially if they are disabled. Now, please rise if you are able. Ladies and gentlemen, with hats in hands and hands over hearts, please stand for the playing of our national anthem, followed by the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. During my time as town moderator, I have continued the tradition of honoring one of our veterans by asking them to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we honor Jerry St. Martin. Jerry?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
And now, a moment of silence to honor the memory of all town residents and employees who have passed away since our previous town meeting, with special thanks to those who volunteered their time to make Oxford a better community, including Alma Morrow, Ralph Miller, Stanley Johnson, David Di Pietro, William Chagrou, Stephen Gordon, Jesse Lammerow, Rita Boudreau, Phyllis Carter, Margaret Adams, Norbert Cludier Sr., Lisa Murray, Melissa Sad, Frances Smolinski, Joseph Abdella, Roland Spear, Gaye Thomas, Lisa McGary, Catherine Lane, Joanne Edmonds, Dominic Gardner, John Marianic III, Joseph Amiot, Bruce Brunet, George Scott Sr., Gary Watson, Jean Saad, Delouise Barta, Susan Okana, Gloria Provencall, Eugene McKay, Drake, excuse me, Jake Strzulitz, Frank Reisdin, Kenneth Devoe, Daniel Faulkner Sr., Dr. Emerson Smith, Raymond Casey, Martha Bell, Diane Matherin, Michael Rabidu, Paul O'Reilly, William Carlson, Judith Carlson, and Tammy Green. Thank you for your attention. Introduction of officials and boards. To my left, we have, if people could raise their hand as I call out the officials or the boards, our town council, town clerk, town manager, finance director, treasurer-collector, our town assessor, director of planning and economic development, our DPW director, police chief, fire chief, our board of selectmen, our select board, Oxford School Committee and the superintendent, Bay Path School Committee, our planning board. Over to my far left and in front of me is our finance committee. The finance committee is appointed by the town moderator and is especially important at town meeting because they represent you, the residents and voters of Oxford. They are your eyes and ears. Each and every article presented tonight is debated in advance of town meeting, and the finance committee will give their recommendation before each vote. Parliamentary procedure. The town of Oxford uses Town Meeting Time as their official handbook of parliamentary law. A copy is available at the Oxford Free Public Library. The Town Meeting Warrant booklet distributed tonight includes an excellent resource at the beginning entitled "About Town Meeting," and that's this book right here. Please reference pages one and two for a better understanding of our town meeting procedures and page three for an explanation of the terminology we use. One term I will highlight is number seven, "Point of Order." I always do my best to conduct meetings that are legal and fair. However, I am human and do make mistakes. If you believe I have made an error, there is no reason to get upset or angry. Simply call out "point of order" and we'll make things right. Many towns have lists of rules that are pages long. I like to keep things simple. I believe strongly in a person's First Amendment right to free speech. However, I believe equally in mutual respect and civility. Personal attacks are not permitted and are often counterproductive. Please make your case for or against the article or idea at hand, not a particular person or group. We all came in as neighbors. Let's be respectful and leave as friends, even if we have to agree to disagree. Town meeting is the purest form of democracy. You, the voters, are the legislature. After hearing discussion, both pro and con, it is up to you to decide what is best for you, your family, and your community. This is best accomplished by keeping an open mind and sharing your thoughts and concerns with everyone, by being recognized by the moderator to speak and then using the microphone up front so that everyone can hear you. And we have two mics today, both in the center side aisles. Please remember to start by clearly announcing your name and street address for the town clerk's records. If you are planning to speak on an article, please come forward to save time. After speaking, please be seated while your question is being answered. If you have a follow-up question, please ask to be recognized again. If you are offering an amendment to an article, it must be in writing, and the town clerk will gladly provide you with an amendment worksheet to guide you. You cannot move the question to cut off debate if you were the previous speaker. The moderator always has the right to decide if opposing views have had equal time. Now, please silence your electronic devices, and at this time, I will entertain a motion to waive the reading of the warrant in its entirety. Do you have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to waive the reading. All those in favor, please hold up your voting card. Sea of pink out there. All those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Article one. To hear the reports of any town officers or committees, and I believe we are going to hear about, I don't know who that was, hear about the community center. And while they're getting ready for that presentation, some happy news. I just wanted to say that I heard it is Myrtle and Roger Bacon's 70th wedding anniversary this past week. And Roger was the principal in this very building for many years.
Good evening. As town manager, Jennifer Callahan, as a part of our opening of our town meeting, we have several reports. One of them was to carry a message to the townspeople that due to our retired treasurer-collector finding a trove, a treasure trove, in the town hall of our 275th commemorative book, she's laughing back there, but it's the history memory book, that we have a number of them that are still available. If you're looking for a little piece of history, it's a beautiful book that goes back and looks at that history all the way to 1988. You can receive them in the treasurer's office, a small fee that's going to benefit our historical commission, and I know Jean O'Reilly, our chairwoman, would be greatly appreciative of that. I also wanted to make sure that anybody who came in late actually gets one of our canvas bags that is actually from a variety of town hall departments with a lot of information coming from each of our departments about upcoming events, whether it's our veterans' luncheon, whether it's the election, when we're doing early voting, and there's a number of things from our board of health as well, contained in here from first aid kits and the like. It's a new and unusual thing. We had the opportunity to provide to the citizens, and we thought that was very important. So if you came in and you didn't get one on the way out, please get one, and there's a lot of helpful information in there. And finally, this is hot off the press, and it is very important to the townspeople, and it has to do with electricity costs. And as town manager, we have entered into an aggregation program. Because of the war in Europe and because of the volatility of the global markets, the winter rates that were just released this past week from National Grid is that as of January 1, the kilowatt hour will be 34 cents a kilowatt. For those people who are paying into our, or through our opt-out program, if you don't have solar, that we're currently at 10 cents a kilowatt. So you do the math, it's going to be a very difficult winter. However, in May, I entered in for a two-year term on behalf of the town to save more than 50% off of that National Grid rate, not knowing exactly where they were going to come in, but we had done a lot of research and understood that that market was going to drive the prices up catastrophically. Our new rates are going to be 15 cents a kilowatt for regular energy supply, and for a green initiative, 18 cents a kilowatt. That's a far cry from 34 cents. If you don't know anything about the electric aggregation program, please go on the town's website. It is really to benefit you, the businesses, and even our town budgets because we are part of that. I will leave the next item, which is about our community center feasibility study. It is currently chaired by our wonderful director for the community center, Shelley Lambert, who's going to talk to you just briefly about the study feasibility group and what they are embarking on and where we are in the process. Shelley, if you would come forward and give the townspeople a little report, that would be great.
Thank you, Madam Town Manager. I am Shelley Lambert, Director of the Oxford Community Center. And slight update, we last week had our first public forum to discuss the feasibility study. In your bag, if you have one, or on the table where you received your information, you will find a packet with the PowerPoint presentation that was presented at that public forum to discuss the future of the building. If you'd like to view the entire presentation with the spoken presenters as well, you can do that on the town website, which is oxfordma.us. To find the presentation, you'd click on the cable access link, and it's showing on both the government and the public channels. Larger prints are out in the hall, as well as on display at the community center and will also be at town hall soon. The study's not complete. We do expect a full report from Berry Dunn in the next few months. The renderings that you see are potential renovations of the main wing of the building along with gymnasium reconstruction. This is just an idea based on feedback that they had received from the board of selectmen back about a year and a half to two years ago, as well as department heads, both the community center, the senior center, other elected officials, and others in town. Many of you might remember in 2012 and 13, an elevator was installed in the community center, and renovations on the top floor were completed for the school administrative offices. Also, in 2019, a new boiler was installed. These things are among the reasons why renovation is being looked at rather than tearing down the building. The town has already made an investment, so we don't want to throw away that investment that the town made. As it exists now, much of the building is still in its 1940s state. The town's long-range goal is to bring the community center building and programming into the modern era. As the feasibility study is still in the works, and the purpose of it is to provide a recommendation as to the future of the building, the group, the feasibility study group of Berry Dunn and the department heads who are working on it, would still like to collect public input, so that in the end, we can offer, for approval, a renovation project which represents the needs, wishes, and ideals of our community. So you will have an opportunity soon, we will have a generic email that you can send your thoughts and ideas. That's not up and running yet, however, for now, you can send them directly to me, Shelley Lambert, through the town website, community center link. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Okay. Article one is complete. Article two. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money to pay unpaid bills of a prior fiscal year or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager and the finance director.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $2,135 be appropriated from the fiscal year 23 Veterans Service operating budget to pay veteran benefits from the prior year.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends.
The finance committee does recommend. Any questions or comments on Article two? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Article two passes unanimously. Article three. To see if the town will vote to amend the Oxford General Bylaws, Chapter 51, Regulations of Dogs, Section 2, fees subsections A and B by deleting the struck-through text and inserting the bold underlined text as set forth below. A for unspayed females and unneutered males from $10 to $15, and B for spayed females and neutered males from $6 to $10. And to further vote to amend the Oxford General Bylaws, Chapter 61, Regulations pertaining to cats, Section 1, General Requirements, Subsections 1 and 2 by deleting the struck-through text and inserting the bold underlined text as forth below. One, spayed and neutered cats from $6 to $10 per cat per license period or any portion thereof. And two, all other cats from $10 to $15 per cat per license period or any portion thereof or act thereon. This is sponsored by the animal control officer and the town clerk.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 3 be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Article 3 is moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends.
Finance committee does recommend. Questions or comments on Article 3?
Robert King, 59 Quobog Avenue. My understanding from some answers I got from the finance department was that we're looking at currently somewhere between $20,000 and $30,000 in revenue a year with the current license regime. The original purpose of the licenses is obviously to get people to have their animals, get their rabies vaccinations. Obviously, if we increase the fees, at some point, there will be some number of people who will choose not to do that. And so what's before, in my view, what's before the townspeople today is how much do we want the cost of the licenses to subsidize animal control, which is a valid thing to do, and how much do we really want to, as strongly as possible, encourage people to get their vaccinations? And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on Article 3?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lauren R. McDonald, 8 Theopon Drive, Unit Number 6. The other day, relative to this kind of question, I had a person come in to do business in the fire department, and they commented on how our town fees are far behind other towns. That was relevant to the, what we're charging for certain permits and whatnot, and other entities around town. That was just a general comment that was made. I think we're all aware of kind of what's happening economically, and while, although it's hard, this does not seem to be a substantial increase, but the increase is more than necessary to cover the operating costs as they are today administratively, and that would be my view on it. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you for your comment. Any other questions or comments on Article 3?
John Yule, 2 Conlon Road, also Chair of the Finance Committee. In our discussions with the Finance Committee, we questioned the cost of administering the programs. Just to point out, the tags alone have gone up double, the little metal tags that you get. So the cost of administering this program far outweigh the increases that we're talking about, which our fire chief just alluded to, that we're really behind. We do a survey of other surrounding communities on what they're charging, and not to be onerous and be an deterrent to not registering your pet accordingly because of the fees structure is so prohibitive. This isn't, as you can see, it's a minor increase, but physically, to cover the cost of the tags that are being issued to the people that are applying for licenses and to handle the paperwork, has gone up significantly. We all have to deal with these things today in our businesses and our community and our homes. So we think this is a modest increase, and it's targeted to the actual services that's being provided. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl LeBlanc, Levin Foster Street. So in regards to these increases of these fees, I understand that the costs are increasing per the town. However, I think that with the taxes that we pay and raise and the grants and all of that, I think that the town could probably absorb this cost for us, and I also think that in these particular times, it would be a lovely gesture if people, if the board of selectmen would have said no to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. And Article 3 carries. Article four. To see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money to the capital stabilization fund or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $100,000 be transferred from free cash and appropriated to the capital stabilization fund for fiscal year 2023.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee does recommend.
The finance committee recommends. Any questions or comments on Article 4? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Article 4 passes unanimously. Article 5. To see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money for unforeseen energy-related expenses or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager, the finance director, and the DPW director.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $200,000 be raised from taxation or be appropriated from unforeseen energy-related expenses.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee recommends.
Finance committee does recommend. Any questions or comments on Article 5?
Joe DePisquale, 4 Clarence Drive. Where did that figure come from? How did you derive that figure for how, you know, what's it, $200,000? How was that based on? What is that based on?
John Yule, 2 Conlon Road, also Chair of the Finance Committee. It was based on calculations on current fuel usage brought together by the Department of Public Works, Darryl Duvall, current estimated prices of fuel. I think you just read in the paper today that OPEC's decided to cut fuel by 2 million gallons a barrel to raise the price up to oil to $90 a barrel. They don't want, it's too low for them to make money, so they're gonna, they're gonna cut our fuel costs. The other thing was alluded to by the town manager. She just looked at a rate, one that rate that we were going to be looking at if we opt to go in with the town is at 15 cents a kilowatt, and currently it's at 10 cents. So we did what we're currently using and what we're projected to use. In addition, with the green grants, we've already put LED lights in some of our schools. We're finishing that project this year, so that's going to reduce energy consumption, but that was all factored in. We had a big discussion at the Finance Committee about actually cutting the use of electricity in the buildings with the new LD, the programs that we're in the process of doing. We already did the streetlights, as you remember, a few years ago, to reduce energy consumption. So basically, doing the math, our current consumption of electricity and fuel, because it's both fuel and electricity, it's energy. Energy covers both the fuel that's used at the DPW, cross our figures that we're not plowing too many roads and not having too many snowstorms, so that we're not having the trucks out in the roads that much. That's hard to estimate, but we do it on an average. So that's how these numbers were contrived and projected. Now, let's hope we don't need the whole 200,000. If, say it's 150,000. Next year, that 50,000 comes back in free cash if it's not spent, but 200,000, we figure is a conservative number because you don't want to come back in the debt a winter when there's no money for energy and have one article, and we all have to have a quorum, to say, "We need another 50,000. 200 was not enough." So we're figuring with what we calculated, how we calculated, I just alluded to, that 200 was a safe number, and if it's, and let's hope it's less, and then that would come back next year as free cash, if it's not spent for what it's been designated to be spent for. In other words, it has to be spent for energy-related costs. That would be fuel and electricity. And as we just alluded to, 15, another five cents is going to, is going to be added to our electric bill from 10 to 15. So that's how that was calculated.
Thank you, Mr. Yule. Obviously, a lot of thought put into it. Any other questions? That's what they do. Any other questions or comments on Article 5?
I understand that there's some skepticism in the community about putting money aside for something like this, but to give people perspective, I believe my recollection is that the electric bill for town hall last year was something around $22,000, and that was just town hall. So when you look at $200,000 in percentage terms, when, for all of the energy that the town has to consume in terms of fuel and electricity, it's actually not a huge amount of money. To us, to me, oh my God, it's incredible, but on the scale of the town in percentage terms, it's, I feel it's a reasonable request and it's prudent to ask for this. We probably wouldn't have to call everyone back here in the winter if finance could go into their contingency fund, but it's, in my opinion, it's prudent to put this money aside for this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 5, please raise your cards. Thank you very much. All those opposed? And Article 5 carries. Article 6. To see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money for the Unemployment Compensation Fund pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5E or Act Thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager. This is sponsored by the Town Manager and the Finance Director.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of two hundred fifty thousand dollars be transferred from free cash and be appropriated to the Unemployment Compensation Fund.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee does recommend.
Finance Committee recommends. Any questions or comments on Article Six? All right. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article Six, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. And Article Six carries. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money to supplement the town's fiscal year 2023 operational budget, Finance Department dash Information Technology, as approved by the vote taken under Article Ten of the May Fourth, 2022 Annual Town Meeting or Act Thereon. This is sponsored by the Town Manager, the Finance Director, and the Public Safety Chiefs.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of fifty thousand dollars be raised from taxation and be appropriated to supplement the information technology budget within the Finance Department for the fiscal year 2023.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee does recommend.
The Finance Committee does recommend. Any questions or comments on Article Seven?
Good evening. Mark I at Eight Hemlock Street. I work in cybersecurity, and I'm just curious if you have any contingency plans in the event that something were to happen, either for the availability of this new system that you're looking at, or, you know, we see ransomware and things like that in the news all the time, and I'm a little concerned that a central point of failure is not gonna help us.
Think the Chief is gonna help us out with that.
Tony Sad, Chief of Police. The majority of this amount of money is gonna go to replace our server for the Police Department. Not only is it housed for the Police Department, but also fire and EMS as well. I spoke to my IT person this morning in house, and I said, can you characterize that server for us? And he says, yes, it's failing. And what happens is, on a weekly basis, we have to have a company come in to do maintenance on that server. Oftentimes, it has to be reset. Now, our entire records management system, which operates our fire, EMS, police, amongst other things, works through that. So if that server goes down, just like it would in your house, that hardware system, we're in trouble. So what we've looked at in this particular article is we looked at the option of having the server hosted in the cloud, which everybody's heard that term before. Our main concern, as that gentleman alluded to earlier, was safety and security, well, mostly security concerns. This is something that had to be vetted by the Criminal Justice Information Service Division through the state in order to allow us to host up in the cloud, because that's their main concern as well. That's their information, that's their security information. They wanna make sure that it's protected. That's already been vetted through the company that we're gonna deal with. So if we had to replace a server today, we have an estimated cost of about ninety thousand dollars, which that server is estimated to be good for a period of like three years, maybe five years tops, before it has to be replaced again. With this particular approach that we're taking, we're looking to host it in the cloud at a, a price of just over thirty-eight hundred dollars a month. It breaks down to forty-six thousand a year. And another, another very important part about that is we're not limited to that server. With it being hosted in the cloud, God forbid we have an incident at the Police Department and we have to vacate or evacuate that building. We can just simply grab a laptop with login codes, set up our, our headquarters, either at Fire Headquarters or remotely in a vehicle, if it was that type of situation, and we'd still have access to our records management system. So I, I would encourage you to support this article for the betterment of all of the public safety departments in the town. And I hope that answers your question, sir, about the security. Obviously, you're more versed than that, than I am, if you work in that particular line of.
I actually, you didn't quite answer it. I was curious about any contingency plans. So what does, what would we do if our radio system went down, right? I'd imagine in a couple of years, we're gonna decommission the old equipment. What would we do?
Right, so you're talking radios, not?
Well, sorry, that was an example. Just in general, this, this new cloud-provided software would, it would replace some things that we have on premise right now, right? What would we do after some period of time, when we've decommissioned that old hardware and we're completely reliant on the cloud, if it failed? Like, we can't, you can call up your IT guy at three o'clock in the morning, have him come down to the station and fix the server. You can't call the cloud. I know, I, I work for the cloud.
Right. Maybe, maybe the Fire Chief could help me out with answering that question for you. He's a little more versed in that area than I am.
Again, we had this conversation at the Finance Committee meeting. By the way, it's online if anybody wants to view that meeting and maybe some of these questions. Even though they're great to be raised, they might have been answered if you had looked at the video, but.
Just do it before the server goes down.
Yeah. I raised the question, a lot of the new phone systems are SIP, and we put this in ten years ago, so, right, you know, the company that I did consulting for. There's redundancy. We know we had a hurricane in Florida. So let's say the cloud was hosted in Florida, for example, to raise your question. That cloud would automatically transition over to someplace out in California. I'd never lose my phone calls. I had, I ran a call center of two hundred and fifty phone calls. That was our heart of our business. So we never skipped a beat with the phones. We had redundancy, so there was a cloud here and a cloud here, east coast, west coast, okay? So the clouds, they switched over and they talked to each other. So if one went down, the other one picked up. You have, you don't have all your eggs in one basket. So we had this discussion at our Finance Committee meeting. We talked about, now, this is for three years. Let me make, as you know, the Microsoft has raised its fees for the user licenses. So this fifty thousand will cover those, that increase in license fees, in addition to where using this box. Now, when you hire an employee, they come to you with a lot of knowledge today. A year from now, the, as things move, progress, they don't have, unless they really keep up to things, they're really not, they're behind the curve. Like I, like I alluded to before, a lot of this stuff's been going on for ten years. We're catching up to it now. That's great. So if you hire companies, it's their charge to keep up with current, if they're gonna be competitive with other countries, that are, other companies that are doing, that are offering these services. They have to be cutting edge. They have to be today, not tomorrow. So by outsourcing it, by doing it, we're allowing, you have to stay current. My employee, if I kept it in-house, we're hoping he stays current, but you, otherwise, you're gonna lose business to the next guy, whether it's Amazon, IBM, or whoever else is offering cloud services. So we don't have our all eggs in one basket. We're, we're going to the experts. We have redundancy. This is for three years. We think, we don't have to maintain this box. As Chief Sad just alluded to, it has mobility. And these are the conversations, which is our committee, the Finance Committee, had on all these articles. So when I sit up here and say, Finance Committee recommends, I don't want you to think there wasn't a dialogue. So this was part of some of the dialogue that I'm sharing with you tonight, just on this one article. So I hope that answers some of your questions, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yule. You, and then the Chief.
Chief, would you like to go first? Because I just have an informational question. I noticed it says a three to one vote from the, from the Finance Committee. So I was just curious why.
It was actually three, three zero one. So I think there was an abstention.
Okay.
Three, three said yes, and one abstained.
Okay, that was my question.
Because one of the gentlemen on our committee works for IBM.
Okay.
They didn't want it to be a conflict of interest.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, no, good question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Laurent McDonald, Fire Chief, Eight Theopon Drive, Unit Six. To answer the question directly, this project actually is the answer as part of our contingency for this purpose. That's kinda how it came about. We're looking at old outdated infrastructure, which is hardware sitting in the fire, the police station, like the Chief alluded to. That means there's hard drives in there, and that's where the information goes into. So every time the phone rings at the police station and a call is entered into the system, it fills data into that databank. Every time you hear a siren, every time you hear a plate run and a traffic stop, every time you see a fire truck or an ambulance go out, there's a report generated and data entered into that system. And that system has physical space on it, whether it be a terabyte or whatever. So as it gets filled with information, it runs slower and slower, and it's physically there in the, in the police station. It's also harder to back up, because for everything that's in that system, as the Chief said, has to be backed up. And it has to be backed up in the same hardware configuration. What this does with this cloud-based system, based upon the recommendation of our IT provider, is puts this in the cloud, which now makes it a virtual drive. So every time the information expands, we have the, the capability now to add capacity. And because we're dealing with companies that are certificated through the CGIS and also under OEMS for HIPAA-related information, it has to be secure. It provides the highest level of security at the minimal cost, and it also is backed up, as I understand it, in at least three different locations. So that, as, and I think the Chairman of the Finance Committee alluded to that as well. So this actually is part of that contingency process, to make our information more secure, make it run faster, and, as the Chief said, if we have to vacate any place, we can just take our, our system. Right now, you have to be physically logged into the system, in the police station or the fire station, in order to access this information. So if we have to evacuate any one of those facilities, then we are really limited by our, our access to it. With this setup, we can go into the State Command Post, if it's activated, and brought down here, the Mobile Command Post, we can go to the fire station, anywhere else, and everything that happens, real time, is gonna happen wherever we plug in that unit. And it'll be encrypted and secured with the latest edition. And every time it changes, now, we don't have to go and get some kind of physical update or have a software update done through them coming to the, the police station and doing it directly to the server or remotely. It's done automatically in the cloud. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any other? Yep, I see a hand.
Good evening. Kevin LaBretton, One Oh Six Dana Road in Oxford. I'm also a detective with the Police Department, and I helped put this together, just to answer the back half of his question with regards to information being locked out or stolen by cyberware. In addition to this being in the cloud in multiple locations, we have the ability to use cellular backup, internet, and hardwired phones to keep the information going to those locations, as well as, every evening at midnight, that information is stored on our physical servers, so that should something happen like that, we may lose twenty-four hours' worth of data. However, we can rebuild it. And even though the server is not going to be used for this purpose, we're keeping it for the backups and for other software, so that will keep us insulated should that happen on either of those two coasts.
Thank you very much. All right.
Robert King, Fifty-Nine Quobog Avenue. My recollection from the Finance Committee meeting was that there was some discussion about the increased cost of licenses for Microsoft Office. Now, obviously, changing something like that in an institution the size of the town government would be a big change, so this is not a reason to necessarily vote against this article. But I think it would be prudent for the town in the future to consider that there are free, freeware options out there for basic, you know, office applications, and it might be something from a budgetary perspective to consider in the future.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments on Article Seven? Not hearing any. I'll ask you to hold up your cards. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? All right. Article Seven passes unanimously. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to adopt the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Twenty-Two G, to authorize the allocation of all funds received from fines assessed for violations of handicap parking in the town of Oxford to the Commission on Disability or Act Thereon. This is sponsored by the Commission on Disability.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town adopt Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Twenty-Two G, to allocate funds received from fines assessed for violations of handicap parking to the Town's Commission on Disability.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on Article Eight? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed to Article Eight? Article Eight passes unanimously. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money to fund costs associated with updating the town website or Act Thereon. This is sponsored by the Town Manager and the Finance Director.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of fifty thousand dollars be transferred from free cash and be appropriated for the updating of the town website.
It's been moved and seconded.
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommends Article Nine. Any questions or comments on Article Nine? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed to Article Nine? Article Nine passes unanimously. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deem appropriate, for general municipal purposes, the fee or lesser interest in all or a portion or portions of the parcel of land now or formerly owned by Southford Realty Trust, as shown on Assessor's Map Thirty-Three A. Parcels C fourteen and C fifty, as described in the deed recorded with the Worcester District Registry Deeds Book Three Five Eight Seven Oh, page two ninety-six, and to raise by taxation, transfer from available funds, a sum of money as funding for such acquisition, and all costs incidental and related thereto. And further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and execute on behalf of the town any and all instruments as may be necessary or convenient to effectuate the purpose of this article or Act Thereon. It's sponsored by the Town Manager, the Conservation Agent, the Director of Planning and Economic Development.
Mr. Moderator. Sorry? Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift or purchase upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deemed appropriate, for general municipal purposes, the fee or lesser interest in all or portion or portions of the parcel of land now formerly owned by Southford Realty Trust, as shown on Assessor's Map Thirty-Three A, Parcels C one four and C five zero, recorded in Book Three Five Eight Seven Zero, page two ninety-six, with the Worcester District Registry of Deeds, and to transfer from free cash, a sum of ninety-five thousand dollars, as for something, as for funding for such acquisition and costs related thereto. And further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and execute on behalf of the town any and all instruments as may be necessary or convenient to effectuate the purpose of this article.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee does recommend. Recommendation of the Planning Board?
The Planning Board recommends.
The Planning Board does recommend. And this article requires a two-thirds vote to pass. Questions or comments on Article Ten?
Chris Everett, Eight Old Worcester Road. I have many, many questions.
We have a town official first that's gonna speak about it. Sorry, I didn't see the gentleman on my side.
And thank you, and good evening. Tony Sousa, Director of Planning and Economic Development. Just a real brief overview, and I'd like to go over some of the slides, too, for, for some sense of, of reference. So by explanation, acquiring these two properties, two unique properties, will help the town advance some of our goals as it pertains, for example, to the Open Space and Rec Plan, Section Six, Community Goals, revitalizing the French River and creating multipurpose Greenway for public enjoyment. The two properties, the two parcels, Parcel C fifty at the bottom of that image and C fourteen, in total are just over fifteen and a half acres. The, probably the most visible parcel, most familiar parcel, is one at eighty-two Charlton Street, which will go to the next slide. Probably looks familiar, although this was a before image. There was some recent work done, some folks in the community to, to help clean up the site. But we have some other images as well. And we'll just go on to the next slide also. Just recently, a few days ago, I actually went back to, just to look at the structure itself, myself and the building commissioner, and it looked very favorable, both from the foundation and also from the roof and also the interior. And we'll go to the next slide as well. This is just a view of the French River from the property itself, and the portion in the back is that other half, if you will, the other 14 and a half acres to complement this smaller parcel, but yet the parcel I think that we're also familiar with. The, in terms of other goals too, with respect to economic development as well, 82 Charlton Street without question, key location, high visibility. The small building itself does have opportunity, does have good bones, if you will, and do see that as an opportunity for potential pop-ups to help promote businesses, but also a welcome center, information center for other purposes as well, including advancing education about the French River and about conservation and so on. Here is a basic concept of, basic, basic concept design of the, what we just called the Welcome and Interpretive Center, but basically taking advantage of the existing structure and the general layout and certainly access to the French River. So that's all that I had to provide as well, but also with me on our team is our Conservation Agent and also our DPW Director May also happy to speak on it as well.
Thank you very much for that explanation.
All right. So, Chris Everett, 8 Old Worcester Road. I know this spot very, very well. I believe they used to sell mulch, stone, all kinds of stuff, they had plants. So our plan is to have an information center there, correct?
One of the ideas.
One of the ideas, okay. We have several information centers about the French River, the dams at Army Corps of Engineers. So you want to spend $95,000 just to purchase the land, never mind any other buildings you want to put up, signs you want to put up, this, that, and the other thing. I could think of a lot better things to do than spend $95,000 on a piece of property for an information center.
Well, again, that's not the only reason.
Well, that's the reason you're presenting, that's the reason you're presenting to us at this time.
That's a possibility.
What are the other possibilities? Have you come up with any?
Sure, as I've mentioned just now, with respect to promoting businesses, a potential location for pop-up, educational uses also as well.
And who's going to maintain this property?
DPW can speak to that.
DPW is going to maintain the property. So our already maxed-out DPW with all of the other properties that they maintain, plowing, lawn mowing, et cetera, et cetera. You want to add 14 other acres for them to maintain on top of this.
All right. So just so you know, the article is about purchasing the property.
About purchasing the property, right.
And they've answered your question.
Right.
You don't have to agree with their answers, but they did answer.
You're absolutely right, Mr. Moderator. It's about purchasing the property. I have a bigger picture. What more is this going to cost us on top of the $95,000? I understand it's coming out of free cash. There's a lot better things we can use the free cash for than buying a piece of property right now.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just saying.
Mr. Yule?
Again, 2 Conlon Road, Chair of the Finance Committee. We had this discussion. It's not just a boat ramp, it's not just a canoe launch. It ties into Midwest Trail. There's a bike path, there's an old abandoned railroad, it ties into Webster, it'll tie into with the Midstates Trail, it'll tie all the way into the Midstates Trail, it works with the, and $95,000 coming from free cash, by the way, doesn't mean we're going to spend 95, because there's already some grant money we're talking about. One of our representatives, Mr. McKenna, who is a very avid canoeer and kayaker and belongs to a couple of groups, is already willing to advocate getting us some funds to augment some of these purchases. So of the 95 that doesn't get spent, it comes back to free cash. 95 is the ceiling. That's the most they can spend. They could spend less, and we hope that that's the case. Again, we had this discussion at our committee. It's so, it will tie into Dudley, it ties into Webster, it ties into the trails, so it's not just a, not just the French River. We're talking about bike paths, trail paths, and there's a lot of different organizations, some of which the Conservation Committee can speak to, that are willing to step forward and put their sweat equity into things. They've already demonstrated that. If you go buy it today, it doesn't look like it did yesterday. People have already stepped up, and we haven't even bought it yet, to clean it up. There's a lot of people out there that are willing to do things for the community without charging us. So to answer the point, the questions that have been raised, is why things are, you know, what's it going to cost and how could we spend money? Part of our master plan, the people that, over 2,000 people that participated a couple years ago in developing a master plan, said they wanted open spaces, they wanted to maintain the environment of the community, and this all speaks to that. Okay? So it opens up our trails, opens up our bike paths, connects to other communities from Auburn, we're talking to National Grid, using their right-of-ways on their transmission lines and some of their other, parallel some of these things, and put together a unified network, what this would be a centerpiece of, for both canoeing, for bike pathing, and for trail walking, and it ties into the federal government's initiative, and Army Corps of Engineers would step forward, they would add a piece to it. So it's a whole piece, it's like a necklace, and this is a piece of it, this is a stone on that necklace, if you will. So that would, like I said, you could go from Auburn all the way down to Dudley, and this is a one-time opportunity, because this is a piece of property that isn't going to always be available, that would tie into all this networking that I've just alluded to. So 95 is the most they can spend. If they spend 30, 65 would come back to us in free cash next year. So that's the way it's constructed, and that's why it was funded the way it was funded. And again, this was all covered at our meeting, so I just want to verbalize it again.
Thank you for that information.
Terrence Cummings, 9 Locust Street. I've been attending these meetings for quite a while, and as I remember, when that place was first built, that was in violation of the conservation laws. And I'm wondering if the conservation laws have been changed or something, so this could be used for something else, without all this stuff being taken down.
I'm Judy Lochner, the Conservation Agent, and I believe that building was built in the late 1990s as a, and it was used as a canoe rental business. I'm not, I don't have any details on permitting for that, and it would be, you know, past the statute of limitation, I believe, as far as conservation, wetland protection laws go. As far as the Conservation Commission goes, they voted in favor of purchasing this property and using it for educational events, just preserving the land for open space, and also the economic benefits from attracting people from out of town to come and visit the French River.
Thank you. Sir?
Richard Vaca, 24 Burbank Street. I am in favor of this project, right? And I'm going to explain in greater detail about this property and about the larger goal of this property, okay? Now, this property, right, it was an old, rotted-out building that used to be there. And this building, a lot of money was spent on this building, right? It looks old and rustic, but that's the way it was built to be like that, you know what I'm saying? So the person who built this building spent a lot of time and energy to make this, to put this building. Unfortunately, that person, their business went out of business, okay? And this property's been sitting there vacant, okay? Now, I put together a package, right, of town improvements that's in front of the Town Manager, right? And one of the things I put in front of the Town Manager was tourism, okay? Now, something I've been wanting to do in this town for a very long time. Other towns are doing tourism. Webster's got the Slater, the Slater Museum there, right? They got the riverboat on the Webster Lake. The town of Sturbridge, right, has spent a lot of money on tourism. They just had their grand opening of trails right behind Sturbridge Village. They bought an old farm, there was an old camp that went out of business, so they have an extensive trail system now that is on their tourism, right? So I want to do that here in Oxford. So this property, right, isn't just, we're just buying a building in a little property, okay? This is one piece of a much larger plan, right? And the goal of the plan is to bring money into the town, right, to get these businesses up and running that are all out of business on Main Street, okay? Some other pieces of the plan, right, is I've been working for about 15 years with the Army Corps of Engineers on our trail system. We have over 100 trails, right, just in Hodgins Village Dam alone, right, of the best mountain biking, walking, and hiking trails. When every, when the pandemic shut down the world, all the other towns in, from the farthest Connecticut were coming here, everybody was depressed, they came out here and they seen our trail system, and it brightened up their day, okay? Now, the Army, Colonel Antonio from the Army Corps of Engineers came down, right, he promised to restore Old Main Street. So Old Main Street is going to be brought back to life. I mean, I've done a lot of work on Old Main Street, it's one of the historical roads in Oxford, right? And, you know, people always say like, oh, tourism, Oxford, right? Well, there's a lot of things in Oxford, right, that people drive by every single day, they never even see it, see the stuff, right? So I, one of the things I want to do is put a tourism book together, right? So, so, you mean, I want, it's going to be, like, I'm not saying that, like, we're going to be like the Grand Canyon or something, right? What I'm saying is...
I'm just going to ask you to wrap up. It sounds like you're in favor.
Okay, I'm almost done, okay? Right? Now, what I'm saying is, is a lot of money can be generated, especially with the, with the mountain biking. Some people, and there's some for everybody down there, right? Everybody from the beginner rider of mountain biking, with a $200 Walmart bike, beginner trails, all the way up to the expert rider with a $15,000 mountain bike from Europe, right? So, and we had a lot of big events here, right, back in the 1970s. We had Steppenwolf played here in the early 1970s with 10,000 people rocking out down Greenbrier. We had...
All right, I'm, thank you very much.
1970, I'm just saying this, we have the ability, right, to have a nice town, and with the Town Manager's rebuilding all the dams, right, with parks, right? We got, I identified 60 areas of place that are going to be done.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up. Thank you.
But I'm just saying this, though. When everything's all said and done, your people are going to look around and say, man, this is a beautiful town.
Thank you. Mike Perry, Fort Hill Road. Formerly of, on the butter of this, and I still am a property of butter of this property. I'm the first one at town meeting to scream about appropriating money and spending money on things that are going to raise our taxes. However, I can't tell you, as being a 20-year butter of this property and living there, how precious the property is. Along that river, there's literally thousands of people that go down that river and canoe it, and the community that use it. People faces in this room that I've seen on that pond in that area for 20 years, my wife and kids are here, they can tell you the same thing, they've used it. It's a precious piece of property. There's freshwater clams, otters, eagles. I've seen, we've seen them all. We're still the butters of it on the other end. Not a tree hugger by any means, Judy can tell you that, but this property is precious. We don't live there anymore, we still live on the other side of town, but it is precious. It's worth every penny, and I don't like appropriating money for things like this, but please do.
Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Collect H. 105 Charlton Street. I am a butter of part of the French River. And yes, it sounds nice to clean this up, but per fact, the first business that was on it was part of the flower shop. So they sell, sold plants. That's how it started, that's how that area got the building and everything else. It's not that I'm totally against it, but years ago, they wanted to clean up the railroad tracks, and people turned that down because when it was opened, we ended up having a lot of people, burglars for the houses around there. They would go on the railroad tracks, they would start fires. That was in jeopardy to us. Also, the river has a lot of beavers, and beavers are protected. Beavers have taken down a lot of trees and have blocked the French River in many different ways. And every time we try to do something, we are told, once the beaver takes the tree down or damages a tree, you can't touch that tree. So, I mean, yes, it's a nice place for people to go canoeing, and people do go canoeing, and they have to carry their canoes over the, all the trees that fall into that river. We said something to Army Corps of Engineer, we can't touch that. Army Corps of Engineers would never help even move a tree to the side, because they said it's illegal for them to touch that tree, because the beavers took it down, and there are many, many beaver huts all along the way, and you cannot break those up per the law. So I'm concerned about this, because I don't want people to start camping out on the railroad tracks on the other side of our property. And that's, on the other side of that property, those railroad tracks lead to houses that's on the other development. They can go and break in and hide down there, and no one's going to get them.
Thank you very much.
So we need to think of that, too. I mean, that property is nice, and it should be preserved, but there's a lot of other factors involved in it.
Thank you.
Chris Everett, 8 Old Worcester Road, real quick again. It is a beautiful property. Whether the town picks it up or not, people are still going to go canoeing and kayaking up the French River. So by purchasing this property, isn't going to bring on any more people than are already using that French River for canoeing and kayaking.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Jared Duval, DPW Director, I just wanted to expound on a little, a few things, namely what Mr. Yule had talked about, about this being sort of a hub for a larger transportation network, and also what Mr. Vaca said too about creating, I mean, he talked a lot about tourism, but certainly in line with the master plan and a lot of the efforts that you've seen going on through downtown beautification efforts, accessibility improvements, really the overarching goal is, is creating a sense of place, right? And you've heard me up here before talking about various capital projects, whether it be roads certainly is a big one, buildings, but parks and open space is certainly another priority. It's another town asset. We're talking about maintenance, right? I mean, we, DPW, through our best efforts and with the folks that we have, dedicated, skilled folks that we have, we take care of all of 100 acres of parks and open space. This 14 acres, really, one acre of it is that sliver that you see along Charlton Street. I don't think that's going to be the straw that breaks the camel's back for us, quite frankly, now that we've had some volunteers step up. I see minimal maintenance there, quite frankly. But what this also does, going back to creating a destination at this location, is that we can tie that into our overarching plan for sidewalk connectivity, pedestrian facilities, multimodal transportation, all those things. If this becomes a centerpiece for a larger trail or bike network, then we can tap into other grant programs, shared streets, complete streets, where we can build sidewalks down to this location. Charlton Street is a gateway from points west to our downtown or to, you know, downtown center. We could make that connection via sidewalk, bike lanes, all these things that, again, long-range planning, but it starts with the acquisition piece. So I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on that. Thank you.
Mr. Krevos?
Thank you. As far as that site, yes, it was...
Can you do your name and address?
Glenn Krevos. So on Main Street, we have been working on cleaning the site up, so the people of Oxford did know that they would be purchasing something that looks worthwhile. I've been in front of New England Fly Tires twice to meet over at Singletary Rod and Gun. This will be also a venue for teaching young children how to fly fish, now that we have the river open up. And beavers are not as protected as the lady just said a moment ago. There is a beaver trapping season. The Conservation Commission did give a vote and permission to do minor cleaning of the river, so that we could get fly tires in there. That's gravel bottom, it's two and a half to three and a half feet deep, it's 1,600 linear feet along Charlton Street. We did finish cleaning up, taking tires out, the last of the human trash, left the large overhanging trees that dropped in for larger fish habitat for flow under, worked on reducing drag in the river to flush out sediments that came in from the redevelopment of Charlton Street in 18. And the river will be, and is, an asset as it is loaded with fish. I'm working over just one example in Ware on the, on the Ware River, and you can stand in the middle of that river and you don't see a single fish. You can walk up to the side of this river, because of the clarity and the quality and the work that EPA and DP has done up on the last two sewer plants up... the work that EPA and DP has done up on the last two sewer plants up in Lester, have taken out the last of the sewers, or there's now advanced sewer treatment plants, the work that the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission has done on working to eliminate the last, since the eighties and nineties and on, the last twenty-five septic systems that were failing going into that river. The water quality is high, the state now stocks it with six to eight hundred trout a year in North Oxford. They used to stock this section down here with the same six to eight hundred, but then they decided just recently that where we have spawning in North Oxford, at the Lester-Oxford line, uh, where it's more suitable for spawning with browns and brookies, that they are now leaving this to more warm-water fish, which we have in there. But they have just committed only a couple of weeks ago to stock this for New England Fly Tires in the spring, where we're asking that the Conservation Commission, uh, contact the West Boylston office. We've already communicated with these people, with the commission, and with, again, West Boylston, the new people there, and they're, they're interested in working as partners with the Conservation Commission and the stocking in the spring. They get a minimum stock so people can also use it again, and this will be a tie-in from this canoe and kayak launch to Lebivit's Landing, and my statement to people is if you're afraid to get your kid out in the woods because of ticks, put him on the river. And we are working, and we are working on that connection over the next few months from this landing spot to Lebivit, so you'll have at least that section fully open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, basically, ticks, ticks don't swim.
I, I did wanna say that I was in favor of it.
You're, you're in favor, okay. And, and ticks don't swim, so that's good. Yeah. Any other questions or comments on Article Ten?
Mr. Moderator, if I may, um, I'm hoping that I might be able to give a, a nice closing argument for this article, not only as a resident, but as the town manager. It's not every day that you can get up at town man, uh, town meeting and have a number of your public boards that represent you all in agreement that this is important. Our Conservation Commission, our Planning Board, our Finance Committee, and hopefully also our Board of Selectmen, who, what you're doing tonight is authorizing them to actually try to negotiate the sale, um, and purchase, um, of this property. I've been here for four years. This is realistically the first major parcel that we're asking the town to invest in, yet our plans, as you've heard from the professional staff, all indicate that this is important for the much larger community. A hundred voters are here this evening to represent fourteen thousand people. Your boards and commissions are here to represent you. I think you've heard an awful lot about the importance of this, um, the fact that we are going to find whatever resources we can. The property owner is not only, um, relating a time sensitivity that we need to operate, um, our exercise, our ability to do this, but also being very, very reasonable, and I think we'll be a good negotiating partner. And most importantly, if we can find money to offset this, we've already applied for a grant, we're hoping to hear in the not-so-distant future for a rural assistance grant that will help us revitalize the property even more. Um, and if not, we're gonna find some other way to do it. You've heard about the community that is already volunteering to clean the property up, no different than the Oxford Business Association, cleaning up the other gateway coming in from Sutton Ave., um, with the beautiful park that they're putting in there. So, let's do the same thing on the end of Charlton Street. Let's do it together because our voices are one tonight, and that is not something that happens every night, so I'd encourage everyone to support this, and I'd ask to move the question. Can I do that?
No, you can't do that, but thank you for your comments, Madam, Madam Manager. Um, all right, I don't see any other people at the microphone, so we're gonna, just snuck one in.
Dolph, come on, move the question.
I promise to be very brief. Um, I don't disagree with anything that's been said tonight. I would like to acknowledge a resident who couldn't come tonight, uh, had concerns about, um, kind of how this would connect to the southern trails just because of Charlton Street. I don't know that that's necessarily realistic, however, I don't know that that necessarily matters for this, because, you know, although you could say, "Well, there's a boat ramp less than half a mile away already on the French River," and you could say, "Well, you can get to those trails at the end of Howard Street," that's not really visible, and we have so many people that drive through the town to go to Buffenville. You see all the signs, Buffenville, Buffenville, Buffenville. And this is, what we're really getting for this is we're getting something highly visible that many, many people will see every day, as other people said, and I think that that's definitely worth the townspeople's consideration.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor of Article Ten, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed to Article Ten, please raise your cards. All right, Article Ten passes, and I do declare a two-thirds vote. Now, ju- just thinking outside the box a little bit, we do have the Oxford Pirates, maybe they could go after the beavers. I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. Talk to the school committee, see if we can get the Oxford Pirates working on that. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the PEG Access and Cable-related Fund established by a vote taken under Article Thirteen of the June twenty-five, twenty-twenty Annual Town Meeting, as authorized by Massachusetts General Law's Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three F. in three quarters, as amended to supplement the fiscal year twenty-three budget, as approved by the vote taken under Article Eleven of the May fourth, twenty-twenty-two Annual Town Meeting, or Act thereon, and this is sponsored by the town manager and the production media coordinator.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of thirty thousand dollars be appropriated from PEG Access and Cable-related Fund to supplement fiscal year twenty-three PEG Access budget as provided within the fiscal twenty-three budget, as approved by the vote undertaken Article Eleven of the May fourth, two thousand and twenty-two Annual Town Meeting.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends Article Eleven. Are there any questions or comments on Article Eleven? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? And Article Eleven carries. Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to amend the Oxford zoning map for the purpose of expanding the boundaries of the Village Business VB zoning district along Sutton Avenue to Interstate three ninety-five by fifty feet along the northern and southern property lines abutting Sutton Avenue layout depicted as parcels E-eighteen, E-nineteen, E-twenty, E-twenty-point-oh-one, E-twenty-one, and E-twenty-two on Assessor's Map Thirty-four C. and parcels B-one, B-two, B-three, B-four, C-one, C-thirty-four, C-thirty-five, C-fifty-one, C-fifty-two, C-fifty-five, and C-fifty-six on Assessor's Map Thirty-five A. or Act thereon. This is sponsored by the Planning Board and the Director of Planning and Economic Development.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article Twelve be adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments on Article Twelve?
Finance Committee first, but the Planning Board.
I, I missed the Planning, my, my apologies, Planning Board. Recommendation of the Planning Board?
The Planning Board recommends.
Planning Board recommends. Uh, this also requires a two-thirds vote. Checking my notes here. Uh, questions or comments on Article Twelve? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article Twelve, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed to Article Twelve, please raise your cards. I don't see any, so Article Twelve passes unanimously. I do declare a two-thirds vote. And lucky Article Thirteen. To amend the town of Oxford zoning bylaws by deleting existing Section Three-point-nine of Chapter Three, use regulations in its entirety and replacing it with the following new section, Three-point-nine Apartments and Additional Living Spaces.
What, you want me to read it?
No. At the beginning of the meeting, we said it was okay not to.
Okay, good.
I was just double, double-checking to make sure we were legal.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move-
But if you'd like to read it.
No, that's okay, that's okay. Mr. Moderator, I move that Article Thirteen be adopted as printed on the warrant.
It's been seconded. This is sponsored by the Planning Board, the Director of Planning and Economic Development, and, uh, this does require a two-thirds vote. Uh, recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board.
And recommendation, Planning Board?
The Planning Board recommends.
The Planning Board does recommend five to zero. Uh, questions or comments on Article Thirteen?
Joe Di Pasquale, for Clarence Drive, is this gonna open up with the changes in the bylaws? Is this gonna open up, like, uh, when they start construct, people wanna build new homes, they're gonna start building duplexes in a single-family neighborhood or multi-family homes? I mean, I'm concerned about that. Obviously, I left my city of Worcester, which I grew up in, because of the high crime, and, and I came out to a nice residential area. I just wanna make sure this is not gonna flood the neighborhoods and trying to, you know, undermine our nice, quiet neighborhoods.
We can get an answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
Could someone just please explain it?
Sure. My name is Patrick Dogg, I'm the Building Commissioner here for the town. Um, this article is for a single-family owner-occupied residential home in R. one, two, and three, and four. So, if you own a single-family home and you say you wanna bring your in-laws in or a family member, this will allow you to have what's normally called, um, an in-law apartment, more, more to a additional living space. So, right now, the process is, this is allowed, single-family home. Um, if you look at the slide, right now, you have to go through, uh, to obtain a special permit through the Planning Board. Now, this process typically takes two to three months. Where here, we would get rid of that process, and they would only have to apply for a building permit. Um, the same process goes with, uh, we check out the septic system, parking, square footage. This makes it easier to reduce the time to gain a building permit for additional living space for a family member, maybe in-laws or, or, um, even close, uh, blood, blood-related family.
And did I hear that it's, uh, also potentially less expensive for the residents?
Correct, yeah. So, the, the process right now takes about, about, I fear about three months, and by the time you're done, um, you're out of pocket probably about three to, three to four hundred dollars by the time you're done.
Presently?
Presently.
And under the new proposal?
Zero. Just the building permit cost, which would, you would also acquire that through the other process, through the special permit through the Planning Board.
So, we, we had a discussion again at the Finance Committee, uh, regarding this, so, um, I'll use my home as an example, I have a finished lower level with a walkout, full bath downstairs. Let's say I didn't have any of that, and my kids wanted to come home from college and find a job, and, so, I'm not changing the look of my house. I meet the building requirements with egress as far as fire goes, I pull my building permit, I pull my plumbing permit, I pull my electrical permit. The meter is still the single meter, it's not dual meters for duplexes. All utilities are single meter. The envelope of my house looks the same as it does today. Interiorly, I've added a lower, I've re- retrofitted my lower space for living quarters for in-laws or my children. I've done all the permitting that I need to do, pulled the building permit, I pulled the plumbing, I pulled the electrical, I've met with the fire, I've done everything, but I haven't had to do architectural plans. I'm not putting an addition on my house. The house doesn't look, from an exterior standpoint, any different than it does today, but I've added, and I haven't added any separate metering for any utilities, it's still a single metering, and I've added and expedited the time and the cost of doing that, so that's what this does to the, to the, to the home. So, it eliminates the need of going through the permitting process, the building just, inspector just talked about, if you were gonna put an addition or a second story on, or enough left wing or a right wing on your home, and change the appearance of your home. This does not change the appearance of your home. So, you're either taking the existing space in your home and dividing it, filing all, getting all the permits that are needed to, to do that, making sure that it's all up to code, but si- it's just accommodating an in-law or a child coming back to live with you and segregating the interior of your home to make it livable or separate living space for them, and to expedite the cost and, and the time to do that. But you still have to follow the regulations as far as any permits that you would have to pull to do it correctly. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation.
Mr. Moderator, just to add to, in the last year and a half, we had about eight or nine, uh, special permits, uh, and they've all been granted through the Planning Board, uh, it's just the process that this has to go through. Um, I'll get a homeowner who has an application for a building permit to add this additional living space, and they tell me, "Well, my mother's gonna move in two weeks." Well, I, I have to be the bad guy and say, "Well, it's gonna be about three months, it's gonna be about three months for this process, and it's gonna cost you three to four hundred dollars." Uh, I feel bad to do that. This is something that we can get rid of this red tape, and then just go apply for the building permit, um, and it'll help the community, and, and families, too.
Thank you for doing that work. Any other questions or comments on Article Thirteen? I don't see any. And just quickly, before I call the vote, I wanna thank the one hundred and eight voters that showed up tonight so that we could have town meeting and get the town's business done, and I'd like to thank P&amp;D Pizza for providing the pizzas tonight. If there's any extras, please put some in your pocket on the way home.
Russ, we have someone.
I do have a comment. Peter, Peter Stendrovich, seventy-five, Miriam District. Um, in, uh, under in-law apartments, it does say that an addition to the original building is allowed, that it does not have to be part of the original space.
I'm sorry, didn't, didn't hear the complete question?
It was commented that the in-law apartment had to be within the confines of the original building.
Correct.
However, however, it says under in-law apartments in the warrant that an addition to the original building is permitted.
That's for accessory. No, that's for accessory apartment. So, if you wanna build an addition, that would still have to go through, at this time, through the Planning Board. But in-law, in-law, we're changing the name from in-law to, to, uh, additional living space. That is, that is the term, additional living space.
Okay, then, then it's not necessarily within the confines, you wanna build a, an addition to put an apartment in as an in-law apartment.
That's accessory, accessory.
Well, it says in-law apartment.
Accessory in-law, correct.
But it's allowable.
For an addition through the Planning Board, you would still have to go through the Planning Board process to obtain a special permit. This is for, if you say you have, a lot of the houses here are split ranch, lower level, upper level, your fo- your foundation is a rectangle, you're staying within that rectangle, you're not expanding, you're staying within the envelope of the foundation, and you're adding additional living space, so that's a bedroom, bathroom, and potentially a kitchen.
I guess I don't understand.
Detached, in-law detached, are you looking at?
No.
In-law apartment, a detached self-contained?
Just says in-law apartment. It's after the definitions, it's this next page, after the definitions.
So, can I clarify for you? I think that the entire, Rebecca Borelli, thirty-six Dana Road. Through the whole thing, it talks about a number of different means of adding space, eight hundred square feet or less, including keeping the geographic space the same, but also that you can build up to under eight hundred square feet, an additional space, you can convert a garage, a barn, something into that additional living space.
Correct. But that would go through the special permit process.
Right, so it's inclusive of all of that. It's not just the one that would be the additional living space in the same square footage, it would, of the home that's already there. It would just change the use of the square footage. My basement doesn't have a full kitchen, doesn't have a full setup, I could do it that way, or I could use a barn and change it into the eight hundred square feet or less living space.
That would require a special permit.
Right, but it's all in the same section that we're approving this Article Thirteen-
Correct.
-that we're voting on does include all of that.
Correct.
I think, I think it's a great thing.
Thank you. And, and sir, thank you for bringing up the question, because I'd rather you question it now, then we come back in the spring, because we made a mistake and have to vote it all over again.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. To speak to the resident's question, um, it may be part of the confusion is that it, kind of recognizing what the old bylaw said and then what we're actually changing. So, the in-law apartment provision was already present, and that, that's not really substantially changing. What, what, the body of the change is that we're adding this additional living space section, and so there were some small wording changes for the other sections, and you doesn't, you don't necessarily see that because you're not sitting there with the old bylaw in front of you, and so, uh, I just wanted to offer that clarity.
Thank you. All right, so I think now we're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article Thirteen, please raise your cards. That's great, and, uh, all those opposed, please raise your cards. I don't see any, so Article- I don't see any, so Article 13 passes unanimously, and I do declare a two-thirds vote. Uh, at this time, I will entertain a motion to dissolve town meeting.
Move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, hold up your cards. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll see you in the spring. Thank you again for coming out this evening.